Clock, so I'm trying a rubber mallet gavel this time. So we'll start the meeting. Thank you, everyone for joining us today isn't isn't really technology is pretty wonderful. As much as I cuss it sometimes because of my lack of of understanding and skill, it still makes it possible for us to still to conduct our meetings and the business that needs to be taken care of despite the the limitations caused by this pandemic. So thank you for all of you for being here. We'll begin by having an opening and a pledge by Councilman David Erickson. So David, you will turn the time over to you.
Hey, I'd like to do my opening in the form of a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful at this time to be able to gather together in these circumstances. We're grateful for the technology and the means that that was given us in these times to be able to still take care of the business of County. Despite the pandemic that holds us. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve our fellow man. We pray at this time that that would endow blessings upon us here in this cash county and throughout this country. We pray that that would bless those that are in need and we bless that we would have a speedy economic recovery. We pray that that would watch over those that are vulnerable to this disease and we pray that that would protect them. We pray those that are need healing. We pray that that would bless them. And again, we especially pray for those that are in the care and the keeping of of those that are ill. That they will also be protected and be able to serve each other the best they can and and do so with the protection that always. We again thank you for again, this opportunity. We pray that that we'll be able to make good decisions tonight, that people will be able to voice their opinions openly and that we'll be able to do so with civility. And that we will be able to honor thee at this time and in this beautiful valley. Again, we thank you for these things and pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And if we've got a flag somewhere, if not, I have a flag. But I oh, there's the flag right there. Okay, then we'll go ahead and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic. For which it stands one nation.
Indivisible. With liberty.
Liberty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
You bet.
There were a few echoes and things in the background, but it but it went well and felt felt good. Thank you very much. Next, we'll we need to review and approve the agenda. Are there any concerns or questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, the minutes we I presume you've had an opportunity to review the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any follow up to the minutes from our last meeting? Okay, we'll move ahead then. We'll have the report from our county executive Craig Butters. He's got some appointments and other other things to talk to us about. Go ahead, Craig.
Okay, thank you. We do have one appointment that is the name of Nolan P. Gunnel to be reappointed to the planning commission. And his term will expire December 31st of 22. He is also a candidate for the county council, so depending on how that race goes, we may need to find someone else to finish that term, but I would recommend that the council approve his appointment.
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, I I believe you have a copy of the expense report that has been sent out to you. We will make arrangements to get that signed by by the Chair Carl and also by our clerk. And for other items, as far as a COVID-19 update, I I would just like to get your input as far as council members on the information that you're getting. If you feel like you're getting enough information. Are you there are things that you would like to have that you're not getting or any questions that you might have?
I think you're doing great.
I I appreciate it personally. I I really appreciate all the updates. I think it's working terrific.
All right, great.
Yeah, I appreciate the updates and I also appreciate the way that we're trying to keep the businesses going and getting information out on who's available. You know, to for takeout and different things like that. I think it's great.
Okay, thank you. I know we have got a we've got a situation where there are some areas of the state where the communication hasn't been going on very well between the elected officials and the health directors in those areas. And some of the different areas or different counties have have passed orders or issued orders that exceed the states and some of our legislative leaders are are looking at legislation that might limit the authority of local health departments. And so we're concerned about that. And we hope that in this special session that's coming up, we will be able to address those issues and and not harm our health departments in any way. We feel like they need to be more nimble in the way that they address issues such as this pandemic and we feel like the the demographics in the state are such that a you in a county or a King County is not be treated the same way as a Salt Lake County. So that's why we feel like it's so important for the local leaders to to be able to make those decisions and we'll be watching that issue closely with this legislative special session. The legislative special.
What could we do to help that? Because you know, everybody gets mad if the federal government tells Utah what to do. Why should Utah got upset? Why should they think they should do the same thing?
Yeah, that's true. There was a very well drafted letter with with that went out with the signatures of the of the elected leaders in the in our health department and also Lloyd Berenson. That letter has been sent to the legislators basically stating that we feel like it's important if we have issues to that we need to straighten out or clear up that we don't do it at this time in a vacuum that we we take some time to look back on the way we address the issues and the problems now. And then if changes need to be made, let's wait until this pandemic is over and and reevaluate, make changes then if they're needed. You know, I it's it's interesting that they would want to to mandate what what our local health department does. You know, it's like you say, John. The state doesn't like the federal government telling them what to do. And I think that the same thing exists for the for the counties. We really don't we. We can take direction from the state when it's appropriate, but I don't feel like this is a case where it's appropriate for us to to have to do that. Like I said, we need to be more agile and nimble and and able to address certain issues as they come up in our own health districts.
Thank you, Craig. I I think everyone on the council, well, I won't speak for everybody. But I that's definitely something that's important that that each low each locality be given the opportunity to address the issue that in an appropriate way for for themselves, and that certainly is the case for us.
Yeah. And one of the changes we've made is that those health directives or health orders are being signed now by our health director Lloyd Berenson and also myself. Commissioner Scott from Box Elder County and Commissioner Cox from Rich County. They all serve on the health board, so that's a change that we've made. You know, it it just signifies that that we have all been involved in the in the drafting, not so much the drafting, but in the approval and the discussion that that led up to the drafting of the orders. James has done an excellent job in drafting these orders and and putting them out. And so I think we're I think we're in a good place as a county right now with the the current order that we've got. Is and we're making an effort to try and start to open things up. I think the next order will probably be coming in the next week or two addressing restaurants and when they can open and when they can invite the public in. That's all I have on that issue. We hope that you'll be able to take take some time and follow this legislative session. Apparently, there are 21 bills that have been placed on the call. A lot of them are just coming out now with the language, so I haven't had the opportunity to look at at those, but you can go on the legislative website and that information should be available there. And also there on your server on the server is an update on the operations center for the road and and vegetation management department. So invite you to take a look at that. That's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you. Just a technology question here. Our last meeting, when the person who was talking was 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 speaking, their their video feed came up on the screen. That's not happening, at least with mine. I'm still showing just the flag in the in the council chambers. Is that something that we can thanks, Janine?
I can see you talking though.
Yeah.
You can see me.
It's a little bit. It's a little picture, but I can see you.
Yeah. Talk, yeah.
The only thing I'm worried about, the only thing I'm worried about is Chris Harold is like the center of attention on my screen.
I haven't got him. I lucked out.
Oh, no, he's just gone. No, he just went left.
I have a question for Craig, please.
Yes.
Craig, have we? Has there any been any decisions made for the new trails committee person or have we? How's that going?
That position, I just spoke with Chris about that yesterday. Chris, do you want to give us an update on that?
Yes, I'm working with Jeff Gilbert with the CNPO. We've we've chatted and he's going to be looking at some applicants we've got where we've just concluded. Excuse me, we've got that position open until it's filled. So we've got some applicants that we're looking at right now and we're likely set up some interviews for end of this week or beginning of next.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Craig? If not, let's move on to number seven. We have three items of special interest, three proclamations, actually. We have the National Service Recognition Day, which is this coming Friday. Grow native bird grow native for Birds Week, which is April 19th. And the National Day of Prayer, which is Thursday, May the 7th. If if you look at your your packet. You can you can read what what these are all about. But we I guess we need to approve these proclamations. Do we want to address those individually or are we comfortable with all of them and and we want to move ahead with an approval on these proclamations?
I'll move that we approve all three proclamations.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved to approve all three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, next on the is Board of Equalization Matters. And we have, I think there were let's see. Four items on there. Do we have any discussion on those? Some of our questions regarding the senior housing issue, I think have been addressed and answered. That one, we have IHC Mountain Healthcare and we have Rocky Mountain Healthcare. I guess there's just three. Are there any questions or concerns about any of those? Let's see, I guess first we need to have a motion to move into into the Board of Equalization.
So make a motion.
Okay. Okay, second, two motions and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll we'll address these now as a Board of Equalization. Do do? Does anyone have any comments or concerns about any of these items?
No, I'll make a motion. We accept them.
But before you do, John, just for the record, and I know there's not much I can do about it at this point, but there's just a minute, I gotta turn some noise off. I I still have such a hard time when I look at a company like as large as IHC and which is which is a large corporation that makes a lot of money. And they still they still hold tax exempt status and property tax exemptions. And.
Yeah, they make almost as much as the church.
It's just it's just incredible to me, though, and I I know I can't do much to about it at this time, but I just at least want to go on record saying that I wish something could be looked at and considered concerning whether or not they are really a charitable organization.
Carl, last year, I'm on the board there, so I am prejudiced. We donated over 13 million to people. Anybody gets it? No, that's 13 million. It was pure donation because they couldn't pay. And then there was over 14,000 we donated to people wouldn't pay 14 million. So there's there's like between 26 and 27 million a year. That 13 of which is free, another 13 we don't collect. So 26 million is quite a donation.
Yeah. Well, I won't. I won't debate further at this point.
There is more to that story, isn't there, Carl?
There's more to that story. Yeah.
So I'll second both those things. I'll second what Carl said and then second that we make a motion to approve them all at least this year.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Well, now we have a motion to move out of the Board of Equalization.
Move to so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Yeah, it's time. Time to move into our public hearings. We have five public hearings scheduled. The first one is second CDBG public hearing, Family Justice Center. Committee to be applied for small cities program and program year 2020. Comments will be solicited on project scope implementation and its effect on residents. I think as one of our panels, we have let's see.
Craig Butters has been cloned, but it's it's a better clone. Tara Warner is on.
Craig, sorry.
Okay.
I do have some wording that I need to read just scripted prior to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Craig.
Carl, this might be more appropriate for you to read, but I will go ahead since I've got the I've got the script.
Thank you.
Okay, I now open the second public hearing for the CDBG program. This hearing was called to allow all citizens to provide input concerning the project that was awarded under the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program. The county has amended its capital investment plan and decided to apply for funds on behalf of the Family Justice Center. I'd like to introduce Terrell Warner, who is the project manager for the family center project. The application was successful in the reading rating and ranking process. And the Family Justice Center was awarded $166,000. Carol will now take a few minutes to explain the project to those in attendance. And then after she's done, we'll take comments, questions or concerns from the audience.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Terrell, we'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you. So the Family Justice Center, I I've come and talked to the county council about this. Our Children's Justice Center, we're pretty much out of room. We've been interviewing a lot of kids lately. We have one interview room, one observation room, and only one waiting room. The other thing is we have a lot of sexual assault and domestic violence cases that don't come to the Children's Justice Center because the victims are adults. So if you're an 18 year old sexual assault victim, even in high school, you're going to be interviewed at the you're going to be your exam, your interview, it's all going to be at the hospital or at a law enforcement agency. So as you're all aware, we would like to move forward with a Family Justice Center. We have a strong partnership with the Malu Foundation. And this is a grant that that I wrote in order to purchase some of the the needed things that will be in the Family Justice Center. So for example, out of the $166,000, there's money for phone system, a phone system, just like we have here at the county. We have a we have a we'll need a phone system there. There's security, videoing, monitoring, those types of that whole system that records interviews that has security in the building and outside of the building. That was also included. The fire system was also included, a vehicle. Just so you're aware, if we arrive on scene with law enforcement and the family, a family member is not available to drive a victim, and that could be a victim of domestic violence. It could be a victim of child abuse. It could be a victim of of sexual assault. If there's nobody to drive that person to to the hospital or to the CJC, that that person needs to ride in a law enforcement officer's vehicle. Or in the past, we've been using our own personal vehicles. If if we don't have time to go get a county vehicle or there's one not that's not available. So we did include funding for a vehicle. I can tell you I've ridden in the back of a patrol truck more than once so that a victim could get to to the hospital or to the CJC. And when we have to take several people, I can let you know, we had a homicide last year where we had four little children under the age of eight years old, and we had no way to get them to the CJC except in our vehicles. And so this would alleviate that problem. The victim advocates and the and the prosecutors would have access to a vehicle at all times. So that's basically what this year's CDBG grant is for, what we applied for. Phone system, security and and recording equipment as well as fire equipment and a vehicle. And then next year, we'd like to apply for an elevator and some other things to go along with the Family Justice Center.
Thank you. Any questions for Terrell? All right, this is a public hearing. We'll open it now to any public comment, any attendees. I think there there are seven attendees on the public. And we'll invite you to raise your hand if you desire to speak concerning this issue and we'll allow you to do so. Okay, seeing none, then we'll close this public hearing item at this time. Thank you.
One more thing I need to say. Copies of the capital investment plan are available if anyone like would like to look at it. They can contact the county.
Okay, thank you, Craig. All right. Let's see. Any of the council have any comments about this?
Terrell? Just got one little quick question. Is it apparently this this grant is for hard assets only?
Yes.
Okay, and the elevator you're talking about, will that be able to be built into the the center you're building?
Yes. We we need to follow. We need to find a contractor that will follow what's called the Bacon Davis Act in terms of wages for the elevator. And I've been working with one and we'll go from there and and I believe we'll be able to get that funded along with some other things. The when we look at the construction costs, this is a new grant. I've never I'd never applied for a grant. I was planning on doing about $50,000 for an elevator and and I'm very grateful that the CDBG people reached out and said, no, let's you know, let's talk about some other things and but in next year's application, we will start working on that this summer to work with contractors that follow the Bacon Davis Act and we'll certify that they'll follow the Bacon Davis Act as we move forward.
I just want to make sure that when we're building that that it'll be shelled, ready for one to be installed in that process, so.
Yes.
I hate to wait for the meeting, then you get that money back and then it'll cost twice as much to put it in at that time, so.
Yeah.
You're doing good.
Thanks. I'm excited.
Well, thank you, and we really do. What you do can't be thanked enough. We are just very grateful for the significant role you play in the lives of so many people in our county.
Well, thank you. I have a great staff and I have a great county council and executive and boss.
Okay, let's move on then to our next public hearing. We're one minute ahead of time, but I think that's okay. This is a public hearing for ordinance 2020-03. Request for approval of the rezone of approximately five acres from the agricultural agricultural A10 zone to the industrial I zone located at 161 East State Road 152 near Richmond. And we'll first give Chris an opportunity to provide any insight into this that might be appropriate. Chris, do you have anything else to add from what we've discussed in prior meetings?
The one thing I'd like to point out is there, this has been in negotiations with the city of Richmond. This is a city of Richmond property. And in part of those negotiations, you'll notice in your packet that the boundary has shifted to the north. So whereas we used to have a a piece of property that extended to State Route 142 just there between Lewiston and Richmond. Now that is going to have an easement and the property to the north, which will front also onto a county road. It's just been adjusted. The acreage is different by maybe a tenth of an acre, give or take. But Richmond's on board with that. The recommendation here is to change the zoning, as you've noted, from A10 to the industrial zone. It will allow a future facility there for the county road department to help with serving the county population on the north end there.
Okay, any questions for Chris from the council members?
This this facility, it's it's not going to have offices and anything like that. It's just going to be basically a drop and go kind of facility.
Think of it as a storage yard for a lot of materials. Yes.
Because that road that road on the north side, it's just a two track right now. It's really not much of a county road at all, is it?
No, I think the primary access certainly will be on the state route.
Yeah.
Not on that north county road.
And is there a requirement? I noticed in the with the let's see, the county commission on when they looked at it or excuse me. let's see, the county commission on, when they looked at it, or excuse me, yeah, let's see, Steph, here we are. When, when they were looking at it, they basically, they mentioned that was there water access and all those kind of things for fire and everything? That's not necessary, is it?
For the rezoned, you're not going to really look at that as a council.
Right.
This will come back as a conditional use permit. They've already submitted an application for that, and they will have to address all those things that are typically tied to development. So, sewer connection, culinary water, fire protection, all those pieces will be required.
Later.
And it'll even require some level of improvement of that northern road where that frontage is, based on our road manual standards. The county's held to the same requirement that any developer would be. So, they'll have to improve the section of their frontage.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. We'll open it now to public comment. Again, there were no comments sent in prior to our meeting, but we'll allow you to raise your hand if anyone in the public has something that they would like to say concerning this item. We'd invite you to do so now. All right, seeing no responses, then we'll close this public hearing.
Do we need to use me, Chair?
You know.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You might want to wait because of that lag on the YouTube side, if there is some folks listening in, and it's a slow response. It might be helpful to have a, what, 20, 30-second pause?
Okay. Thanks for reminding me about that.
Carl?
Yes.
I do have a question. When they, Dave, did you mention it's like for storage? What kind of storage things are going on that property?
Gravel, saw, trucks.
Yep, think of it as a, they'll have lots of piles of stuff that they need for road maintenance activities.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
It's basically something they could build up during the summer, have everything all ready in some off-time, whatever, and then when it's needed, it's there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Our next public hearing doesn't begin until 5:40. There may be people who will want to join us at that time. We typically would have a motion to close the public hearing after each of these items. Do we have a motion to close this public hearing on ordinance 2020?
Close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Thank you. All right. We really don't have anything to jump down to. Pending action number 11, there's nothing. We have some initial proposals for consideration, but where we're just five minutes away from, well, I don't know, maybe we can go ahead.
Carl?
Yes.
A suggestion, I, we had some input from a couple of the individuals that are sponsored those resolutions. They would really like to have those resolutions read. Have we got a few minutes that we could do that right now?
Yes, absolutely.
Does anyone have access to those on your screen?
I, I can get to it very quickly here. I'd be happy to read those.
And those, if you would like, if you would read the National Day of Prayer, and also the, the one.
Service?
Grown native for birds.
Okay. All right, let's, let's start with the National Day of Prayer. This proclamation reads, "Whereas the 69th observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May the 7th, 2020, with the theme 'Pray God's Glory,' based on Abba Cook 2 and 14. For the earth will be filled with the knowledge of the glory of the Lord as the waters cover the sea. And whereas a national day of prayer has been part of our national heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775 and the United States Congress in 1952 approved as a joint resolution that the president shall set aside and proclaim a suitable day each year other than a sun, as a national day of prayer on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and meditation in churches, in groups, and as individuals. And whereas, United States Congress in 1988 by public law 100-307, as amended, establishes an act to provide for setting aside the first Thursday in May as the date on which the National Day of Prayer is celebrated. And whereas, leaders and citizens of our communities, cities, states, and nation are afforded the privilege of prayer with the joy of seeking divine guidance, strength, protection, and comfort from Almighty God. And whereas, recognizing the love of God, we citizens of Cache County, Utah, treasure the freedom to gather in prayer, exercising reliance on God's power in the face of present challenges and threats, asking for His blessing on every individual of our county. And now therefore, I, Craig W. Butters, Cache County Executive, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 7th, 2020, as a day of prayer throughout the county of Cache, and I commend this observance to all of our citizens. And witness thereof, I have entered here unto, set my hand on this 14th day of April, 2020, Craig W. Butters, Cache County Executive." Very nicely written and worded by the council. The next one is proclamation grow, proclamation grown native for birds. Its proclamation says, "Proclaiming April 19th through the 25th, 2020, has grown native for Birds Week in Cache County, Utah. Whereas growing native plant communities in our residential, municipal, and commercial landscapes promotes and enhances our sense of place. And whereas increased awareness and use of native plants is fundamental to water conservation, water quality, habitat preservation, and successful gardening. And whereas gardens and landscapes composed of Utah's native plants require little or no fertilizers, soil amendments, or pesticides. And whereas using fire-wise plants native in our landscapes is often a safe option. And whereas landscaping choices have meaningful effects on the native insects that bird populations need to survive. And whereas, a diversity of birds is indicative of a healthy ecosystem, including biological control of pests, carry and regulation, seed dispersal, and nutrient cycling. And whereas, bird watching can be fun, can be a fun, relaxing, multi-generational, educational, family well. Now therefore, I Craig Butters, Cache County Executive, do hereby declare Earth Week 2020 as grown native for Birds Week, and encourage the citizens of Cache Valley, Utah to actively foster and support the use of Utah native plants in their gardens and landscapes. Signed by the Cache County Executive Craig Butters on this date of April 8th, April 14th, 2020, Craig W. Butters, Cache County Executive." Comments or about this proclamation? And finally, we have a proclamation for the National Day of Service. "Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's elected leaders are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a plus-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities. They educate students for 21st century jobs by the opioid epidemic, respond to natural disasters, and support veterans and military families. And whereas the national service, national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 45,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 10th, 2020. Therefore, be it resolved that I Craig Butters, Executive of Cache County, do hereby proclaim April 10th, 2020, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our country, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. By Craig W. Butters, Cache County Executive." Thank you, Craig, and I apologize for skimming over these too quickly.
No, that's fine. Thank you for reading them, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. All right, our next agenda item is a public hearing. Excuse me. Public hearing, addressing ordinance 2020-04, request for approval of the rezone of two parcels totaling 10.47 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the commercial C-zone, located on the northeast corner of 3200 West Highway 30, near Logan. And Chris, we ask you to give a brief summary of this for the, for the public and reminder for the councils. We've discussed these in the past, but the public may not be aware.
Certainly. The request is from the A-10 zone to the commercial zone. It's located there just off Highway 30, just adjacent to the, I believe that's the Hunter's Education Building, DNR property right there, shooting range. It's 10.47 acres in size. The specifics are captured in the minutes. Again, at a rezone level, we don't typically delve into the specific type of use since there's multiple possible uses in a commercial zone. However, the use is consistent with other uses there in Logan City. The zones there located in Logan City are industrial, commercial, and public. As identified, if you go further east on that road, you'll recall that that's where we have the Didi Auto salvage yard. It seems to fit well in that area. So, as the planning commission reviewed that, they felt like it was a good location for a commercial zone, given its proximity to the other zones and to an accessible road.
All right, any questions for Chris from the council or other panelists? All right, seeing none, then we will open this to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment concerning this public hearing in ordinance 2020-04? And we'll give you a few minutes since, since it is lower with the Facebook feed. So, if anyone has a comment, would you please raise your hand? Okay, seeing no notifications for comment from the public, I'll seek a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 2020-04.
I'll make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. We'll move to our next public hearing now. It's concerning the CIB grant application updates to the community or to the Cache County plan. And we'll, this is a public hearing, but we'll, again, Chris, we'll have to turn to you and ask you if you will bring everyone up to date on the current status of this.
Happy to do that. I'd like, if Janine could help me out, there's somebody in our waiting room. It's our county white planner, Taylor Jensen. He's going to give us some, some details there that the CIB would like to see us, make sure we discuss, that you discuss as a council and that are included in the minutes. So, if we could throw him in there, Janine, thank you. Taylor, are you there? It looks like you're muted. There you go.
Yeah, do you guys see me?
Can't see you. Oh, yep, I see you now.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Chris, for bringing me in. I've been working closely with CIB just on this application. And there's a couple of points they want us to bring up in each public hearing. We've got to go over what the money will be used for and what we're asking for. Just some general stuff about the CIB. It is a 50-50 match. We do exceed that match on both because the largest amount of CIB will fund with any other $50,000.
Thanks.
It's middle of June, but we're looking like we're going to be ready to submit early May to avoid any troubles with that deadline. So, with that, for the general plan, we're asking for $50,000 to go towards our state mandated general plan requirements. The total cost of that plan is $111,984, meaning the county will be matching the CIB investment with $61,984.
Okay. Any questions of Taylor? All right, this is.
I just have a comment.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to say I appreciated how this was put together, and I'm not sure, Taylor, if that was you, or Chris, if that was you, but I appreciated that we got the form and that we got kind of a spell out of the information. I thought that was really helpful, and just wanted you to know, I appreciated it.
Yeah, that was Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
And Taylor.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thanks.
All right. If there are no other comments or questions from the panelists, this is a public hearing, so we will open it up to comments from any attendees who are here that would like to comment about the CIB grant, its application, and its use. If you, if you have a desire to comment, we'd ask you to raise your hand. And we'll give it 20 or 30 seconds to let the, the Facebook feed catch up. And we'll give it twenty or thirty seconds to let the Facebook feed catch up. Been thirty seconds. No individuals have said that they wanted to comment, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Our next public hearing was scheduled for five fifty-five. We're well ahead of that, and so we'll move forward to item twelve in the interim period. Initial proposals for consideration of action, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero three, North Cache County Public Works rezon. Request for approval of the rezone of four point nine three acres from the agricultural A-ten zone to the industrial zone located at one sixty-one East State Road one forty-two near Richmond. We had a public hearing on that just a few minutes ago. So are there any comments, any further discussion on this? Is there a desire to take action tonight?
I'll make a motion that we waive the rules and adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash three North Cache County Public Works rezon.
Second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four, the Bar E-S-L-L-C Commercial rezon. We just discussed this one in public hearing.
And I would move, I would move that we waive the rules in, except ordinance twenty twenty oh four.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight, twenty twenty annual noxious weed control policy. And we haven't really discussed this at this point at least, but let's see. Chris, would that be something you can fill us in on?
I'm going to appoint again to someone else. So this would come, I just assisted the Public Works Group with putting this together. You'll want to meet or visit with Matt and Joel and Jake. As you know, Jake Forsgren is really kind of leads that charge on gathering our weed department funds and establishing a lot of our policies. I see that they're in the waiting room. That might, yeah, thanks, Janine, you're ahead of me. You probably want to have Joel or Jake or Matt address those points, council.
I think Jake so.
Go ahead, Jake. We'll give the, we'll give the microphone to you.
Now, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, first off, I want to thank the county council on behalf of the Vegetation Division for all of the support that you guys have given us in the past few years. So what this weed control policy is, is it's a policy that's been put into place past years. There's not much that has been changed on it. I'm going to read to you the statement of intent. So the Cache County Noxious Weed Control Program will function and enforce in accordance with the Noxious Weed Act and Cache County Code Section eight twenty-eight to organize, supervise, and coordinate a noxious weed control plan for Cache County, including chemical and biological control practices. I don't know, do you guys have a copy of this by chance?
No.
Yes, we do.
Right, we do.
Yeah, on our iPads. Yeah.
Okay. Well, if you scroll down to section C, it says that this is our control service area. So it's any individual, corporation, municipality, governmental agency, or organization owning, leasing, or controlling property within Cache County may request the services of the county vegetation division in accordance with the noxious weed control priorities established and approved by the Weed Board and the Cache County Council. So going into that, as we scroll down to section E, categorize, or the categories of weeds, excuse me. So the state of Utah has adopted noxious, a noxious weed list with prioritization within the Utah Administrative Code R-sixty-eight dash nine. As Cache County has unique climate, geography, and weed populations compared to the rest of the state, a Cache County specific prioritized noxious weed list will be adopted annually. The county's priority noxious weed list is based on existing acres of infestation, potential of weed population reduction, and long-term eradication, and specific targets located to reduce the spread of noxious weeds in other areas, which are along our riparian corridors and, of course, our Forest Service boundaries. This list will be updated yearly and used as a reference to determine which project should be targeted with grant funds. So if you guys see Appendix A, which is attached to this, in March thirty-first, we had a Weed Board meeting, BI conference call. I emailed this, this weed control policy, as long with the Appendix A, out to our Weed Board members. They had an opportunity to review it, and then they voted on this. So what has changed on this is our county prioritized list for two thousand and twenty. The idea was behind this is we do get grant funds from the state. And where there is fifty-four noxious weeds on the state list currently, it became kind of a challenge, I guess, to go out there and offer control on every one of these weeds. So as a Weed Board and as a division, we decided it would be important for us to prioritize our own county list by using the weeds on the state noxious weed list and prioritize them to fit the situation that we have here in Cache County. So over the years, as we've been working with carry-up at the GIS Department, we've come up with a mapping system where we can go around the county and start mapping certain weeds. And then we take the totals of these weeds at the end of the year, and we put together and decide how many parcels are affected within the county. And then that is what determines where they are placed on this. So anything in the red is what we call the watch list. So these weeds are currently not in our county, but they may be in surrounding counties. So there are ones that we are definitely watching. And then as you scroll down, you'll see the gray list, which is what we call eradicated. So this is where we can show our success stories through the years. As we went out and treated certain areas where we've known that these weeds were existed, we've come to find out with working with the landowner that between them controlling them and us controlling them as a county, we can say that they have been eradicated. So there are three noxious weeds that's on the state noxious weed list that have been eradicated from Cache County. It doesn't mean that we just wipe our hands from these areas. We go back as a division and check these areas every year and monitor with the landowner to make sure that all of this stuff has been taken place. And then everything in the yellow, those are what we call our early detection, rapid response weeds. These weeds will be treated, and all of the, I guess, the grant money goes towards treating these weeds, whether it be assisting the landowner in doing it or offering our assistance and going out and walking their property with them as well as treating if we need to. So those yellow weeds are the ones that we're really watching for and that we're going to prioritize. Being with the situation that's at hand this year, this prioritized list has gave us a vision to know what direction we need to go and where we need to put the money on the ground to maybe stop the spread of these, what we call EDR weeds, from becoming a potential problem in the future. And then as the list goes down, we've went by parcel infestations by numbers and throughout our county, and it's just places the weeds where they fall. Our goal and idea obviously is to move everything from the gray eradicated. Maybe in my great-grandkids' life, they'll be able to see that. But right now, the goal is, is we're working at it every day to try to get that taken care of. As you look further down, you'll see additional county declared noxious weeds. So the Weed Board, after reviewing our findings, we found that we have a noxious weed, which is salt, Russian salt tree, that was found in our county. There is no other county in the state. There's no other state around us that has this weed. The state of California has one spot where they found it, and it has been declared noxious in their state. And so Cache County decided that we would put it on our county list under the EDRR. And as the state's been watching this, they are actually thinking of putting it on the state list next year. So we can say that Cache County is leading the way as far as weed control in our state. And then Crack Willow was put on there by the Weed Board as well, just because of the issues that we've had in the past, the property damage that's happened from the crack willows when we had the floods, and just making sure that the public are aware that these are trees that they may not want to plant around their house and maybe put them in areas where they're not going to cause flooding damage from damming off our streams and as well as along our roadsides. This is a big tree that we're battling along our roadside. So we put that on our county list as well. So that's as far as the only changes that's happened to this weed policy. Like I said, the Weed Board voted on it, and it was approved. So now it's got to go, I guess, to the council.
Thank you, Jake. We appreciate your work and your knowledge in this area. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
Just you got my favorite weed a long ways down the list, Medusa headry.
Okay, is there, would you like to put this on our action agenda for next time? Or is there someone, would someone like to make a motion to act on this one tonight?
I would make a motion that I move to approve this list and approve it as written.
Second now.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approval of this, of this resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. I apologize to the public. We went over time a little bit from the CIB grant application discussion on urban and rural area assessment and cost of service plan. And just, I'll just read this, this public hearing. Notice to council and the public of application to the Community Impact Board, CIB, to request and obtain financial assistance through grants. The requested funding will be used to assist with the Cache County Urban and Rural Area Assessment and Cost of Service Plan, which will provide long-term direction and collaboration between rural Cache County and the communities located in the county. This additional public hearing is being held at the request of the CIB to clarify the distinct projects. So I'm not sure who to turn this over to. Would this be?
Taylor.
Taylor, again?
Yeah, I'll take this one again. Thank you, council. So for the Urban and Rural Area Assessment Cost of Services Plan, we are again asking for fifty thousand dollars from CIB. This will go towards a plan which will identify existing and future growth patterns focused on fire, EMS, law enforcement, sewer, water, and roads. It will identify cost of services, potential revenue, potential funding sources, and organizational needs. Total cost of the plan is a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, meaning the county will be matching the CIB investment with sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, are there any questions?
Well, it's my understanding, I thought we had this already budgeted for. Right?
That's correct, Dave. That's already budgeted for.
Yeah, I was going to say it was already set aside, and I don't think the exact amounts, but I thought we actually had budgeted a little more than that, didn't we, Chris?
That's correct.
Aren't we just holding this public hearing because the CIB wanted a little bit more understanding of how that money was going to be allocated between the different projects?
That's exactly correct.
But I thought we had, yeah, I knew we had more set aside than this, but the, these are the details that I think we need for the public, so.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We're looking at now to any members of the public who would like to ask questions or address this particular CIB grant application and cost of service. We'd ask you then to raise your hand. If you do, you'll wait for twenty to thirty seconds to see, or to give the feed time to catch up to us. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that ends the public hearing section of our agenda. The only remaining item is a discussion, consideration of circuit breaker tax relief procedures. Craig, is that you or James who's going to address this one for us?
Well, I think you have probably four competent people to do that. Councilwoman Worthing and Councilwoman Tidwell are both in the know on this. They spent quite a bit of time looking into it. And John Luthy is also on the line, and he spent a fair time working with us as well. So one of those three, and of course, Executive Butters is very knowledgeable in this area too. So I'm sure any one of those four would love to speak.
All right, I'll let whoever wants to jump in.
We had a good policy and ordinance review meeting this morning, went over this, this policy and took a look at it. I, I think John did such a great job of drafting the ordinance or the policy that we ought to have him give the explanation, if you're willing to, John.
You too. Little bit of background on this, as the council's aware, there's a number of tax, property tax relief options for folks, depending on their situation. There's one for veterans, widows. There's one for blind persons. There's the indigent abatement. Then there's the circuit breaker tax credit. Some months ago, our office, the attorney's office, was asked to to kind of get involved to look at the procedures and for the circuit breaker tax credit and how to resolve some issues that had arisen. At some time in the past, my understanding is that the Treasurer's Office took the applications for circuit breaker tax credits. And more recently, the Auditor's Office has been processing those applications. I think a fair characterization is that the Treasurer's Office's focus as it handled them was primarily a customer service focus and assist the taxpayers who may be eligible. And the Auditor's Office's focus and their approach has been to ensure that those who are applying actually meet the qualifications and to be diligent in reviewing those applications and ensuring eligibility. Because of the history of two offices handling the applications and the slight difference in focus, there developed some friction between the offices, and that's on this circuit breaker tax credit process. That's when the Attorney's Office was asked to get involved. So in discussions with Jill, That's when the attorney's office was asked to get involved. So in discussions with um, Jill, who I know is online and would be happy to hear her comments if she'd like, but in discussions with Jill and with Craig McAllister and others, we were looking at do do we um, keep the the system essentially the same, but um, but have the council issue some direction to the auditor's office. Do we move the application process to the treasurer's office with recommendations from the council? And ultimately, um, we decided that it may be best just to have a different office altogether handle the circuit breaker um, applications and both Jill and Craig McAllister agreed to that approach and Kathleen, our assessor, agreed to be that new office to handle those applications. Along with that agreement, um, there was agreement from those offices that in the application process um, that that our county would use, begin using the form prepared by the state tax commission for circuit breaker applications. We've been using as a county our own forms, um, but there's agreement to begin using the form prepared by the state. And um, and that's been taken recently has to uh, to fully investigate each of the applications that comes in. Um, if if not audit them as they come in. And there's been an agreement based on that we received, um, that Diana Schaefer solicited and that we received the tax commission and the state auditor's office that at the application stage, we can just ask for the application and some form of income verification and then do a more rigorous audit process on the back end. And so that's what the three offices have agreed to do, that will ask for the application, assigned application, together with income information, either in the form of a tax return or some of these uh, low income folks don't file a tax return and in that case uh, they would be asked to submit their October, November, December, and a year-end bank statement to show income eligibility. Um, and and that based on that information, the assessor's office would process the applications and make an initial determination um, on on whether the credit should be granted, enter that into the system. And then uh, that would go to the treasurer's office to complete the um, applic- the I I don't know the right word, complete the process with a check and balance. At the application and granting or denial stage. And then on the back end, uh, there will be auditing and the three offices have agreed that that would be a random uh, poll of five percent of the applications submitted that then would be reviewed in additional depth at the end of the tax year to ensure that people that are not eligible aren't be being given the credit and that and the people aren't being denied, uh, who should be getting it. And um, we're recommending uh, some direction be given as to the uh, process and extent of the audit. And the the two key things that that need to be looked at on these applications are to to meet the requirements, the household income has to be below a certain level. So there needs to be a determination of who's in the household and then what the income of the household is. And so at the audit stage, um, that all initially, there would have been provided either a tax return or three months bank statements. And then at the audit stage, the full year's worth of bank statements would be requested to verify the income. At the application stage on members of the household, uh, we'd be taking the applicant's word on their um, application, their signed application at the audit stage. Uh, the recommendation would then be to go ahead and look at voter uh, registration records to verify that there aren't more folks in the household than than have been claimed. Uh, and of course, if if the county becomes aware of information that would give rise to some basis to believe these folks aren't being truthful, then the assessor's office would pass those applications on to the auditor's office for audit as well. Um, that in a nutshell is uh, the proposal. There was a resolution back in nineteen ninety-seven outlining the the county's policy and procedure for proper tax relief. The the document that you've been given for today takes that um, existing policy and procedure and just modifies it to account for this change in the circuit breaker um, process. Wanted to give you that background and those um, recommended changes uh, so that there can be feedback from the council. We've given these recommended changes to Jill's office uh, today. Um, and I I apologize that it was only today, but we got them to Jill's office today, to Craig McAllister's office today. And um, are wanting feed and and again, this morning, the ordinance review committee reviewed these recommendations so that we're hoping to get feedback and and finalize language so that you could adopt um, a final version of policies and procedures uh, at your meeting in two weeks. Because beginning in May is when uh, we'd anticipate applications to begin to come in and would like to have the the procedures formalized for Kathleen's office by that time. And with that, I'm I'm happy if others want to, who've been involved, want to make comments, or I'm happy to field questions.
Let's see, Barbara and uh, Gina, do you have anything to add? You've been involved with this process.
I want, I think, thank you, um, John, and he really did uh, do a lot of work on this. Um, I think we, you know, we had questions about the audit process and how that would be conducted, what what applications would be pulled for audit. And um, it was mentioned that we could use a program that would go in and uh, pull, you know, randomly which applications could be audited. And that would take place, we're still trying to probably towards the end of the year. And um, we're still trying to come up on a date for that and figure out a proper process because we want to make sure that the audits are done before, um, you know, that we tell the clients all is okay, and then all of a sudden, nope, you didn't meet the requirements. We're going to have to rescind what we said. So we are working on that also.
On on that note, I'll say that after our ordinance review committee meeting this morning, Kathleen followed up with me on that issue. And I know that she spoke with Craig McAllister and that she was possibly going to have time to reach out to Jill as well to talk about that timing. Uh, she, after she and I spoke, I changed the language a little bit or added some language um, that would, based on what Kathleen and I discussed about one possibility for the auditing done before things are finalized, so that these folks don't get false hope and end up then getting hit with the the bill later. So we are working on that.
Okay.
Would like to make sure that we get input from uh, Jill's office before we finalize anything on that.
Thank you, John.
I got a question, Carl.
Please, go ahead.
It's clear up on the front definition. It says tax release means any reduction in the assessed value of the property owned by any of what. I didn't know, do we reduce what the property's assessed at, or we only reduce what percentage of the taxes we take from the assessment? I, that definition, I I got lost there where it says reduction in assessed value of the property.
I don't think we changed the assessed value of the property. We just we make a reduction in the amount of taxes collected on the assessed value.
But the definition says it's a tax relief means any reduction in the assessed value of the property. That's the definition of the very first.
Yes, that that's a, that's a part of the definition and I'm not an expert on this, but based on what I've learned in in this process, I believe that the the circuit breaker program actually contemplates both a reduction in the tax or a credit on the taxes and then a reduction in the assessed value. I don't know about the um, the veterans and the blind persons and that sort of thing, and I think that those but I do think they fall under the the rest of the definition where it talks about reductions of taxes charged. But I think that there is a component in the circuit breaker program where the state gives a credit to the individual. And then the county reduces the assessed value by a, I believe, twenty percent. Jill may know better on that, um, but I I believe that's how it works.
Two, two questions then I I have. That was a good catch, John. It isn't really clear on the definition, maybe maybe that needs to be clarified a little bit as to what we're really talking about. And then this is next question I had was, when we talk about, you know, property tax relief in the in these instances, how many of these circuit breaker applications do we typically get?
Of course you.
We've been getting roughly two hundred, just over two hundred, I believe, in the last couple of years.
That's more than I would have guessed.
Uh, Car- Chairman Ward, this is Jill. I was just gonna say, the assessed value is not changed, is not reduced in the circuit breaker program.
Sounds like we do need to then adjust this definition.
I think so. I think there's some other things that we've looked at that there's some code um, references that have changed as well. So there are some things that we need to look at a little more closely on this before it's passed, but those can be worked on this next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you, Jill. I I'll I'll say that the document that you have, what what I did was take the nineteen ninety-seven uh, policy and anything in black type is that nineteen ninety-seven policy and then in the red text is what I've added based on what we're trying to do with circuit breaker. And yes, that's part of why I need a little time between the discussion this evening and final form to go through. It sounds like Jill's office already has. Go through all of those code references and and find anything that needs to be updated. And it sounds like the definition may need to be updated.
Okay, any other uh, discussion on this on this item? It is something it sounds like we'll need to bring up again in our next meeting and give give John and and Jill and all those an opportunity to uh, clarify a couple of things. Di- Diana also chimed in as a uh, on a chat and she said value is not reduced, newer definition in tax commission standard three. So uh, sounds like we just need to to bring this uh, policy in line with with what the newer definitions are. So we'll let you work on that.
One question is, uh, this is not new. How are other counties handled on this? They have the same process? Do they have the assessors taking their role and back and forth? How are other counties uh, running the same process?
Typically, and Jill, speak up, um, if I'm saying it wrong, but I think that typically it's being handled in auditor's offices for the processing. And that that will be kind of unique um, in having the assessor's office taking the applications.
And that's the part that doesn't make sense to me.
And and the, and I've tried to be delicate in describing it. There there are developed, there are developed uh, level of, I'll use the word acrimony between the two other offices that it's wide and agreed to by Jill and Craig. They just have a a third office that hasn't been involved um, begin handling those applications for the time being.
Yeah, can I just add one thing here? I think this is a good example of, um, we had representatives from the council and executive butters that the executive branch worked out a resolution and there are problems when you have too many hands in the pie, it created issues between departments. And uh, the parties came together and came up with a good idea, and I think it's an excellent one and uh, that that actions. There's a check and bound assess because the the applications will be taken by one office, not by two offices or three offices. That's confusing. So that's cleaned up. It will go to the assessor's office, which is an appropriate place. She assesses property. Uh, she will manage getting uh, notice out to those who have applied in the past. And those applications will all funnel through to her office. Uh, the N G P, and this is, it eventually goes to the treasurer who will look at, have eyes on it to make sure it's processed correctly and that the money is managed correctly. Then on the back end, at the end of each year, our auditor, Jill, will look at these and uh, audit and make sure that these were uh, done properly and that the uh, people applying presented sufficient evidence and there was not any fraud or or misgivings in that. So it's really a much cleaner process. And and credit really goes to everyone who participated, from our council members to the members of the executive branch that we were able to resolve uh, this issue and and it will work well. And uh, all the parties have come to agreement on that and and I think some of the uh, confusion and some of the problems that were going on were because there were too many people doing the same thing. And it was, I think, confusing for the public as well. And I think we'll improve the service um, that we're able to do. Our, we've already, Jill's office has been working on better forms. Uh, making it easier to understand for the public and putting that in one place and that that application I think in the end is a really good thing. So I'll I'll be quiet now and me myself.
I'm kind of like uh, Mr. Erickson or those. Seems like to me you gotta go into one person, then you got two more review units. So it's kind of like we, you take it here, that doesn't mean anything. Then it's gonna go through three more steps. It sounds like we're doing the same thing three times.
And by moving the the process, I mean, it seems like we need some expertise from the the public standpoint, because really it's gathering their financial data to see if they qualify, right? It's not so much what the value of the property is, it's more what's their ability to pay because they're asking for relief, correct? So we need that expertise. And if we move it to another office, does that expertise then transfer?
I think that the uh, the assessor's office in accepting the applications just have to verify that all the information that's required on the application is in fact with the application. And uh, then they complete that process for that individual and then it's passed through the treasurer's office so that they can make sure that the 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 abatement is granted. And then at the end is when the the auditor comes in and gets involved in a five percent of the those applications are randomly selected and then the auditor is the one that looks at them. So every, each office has a role to play in the process. Um, I will just say that um, one of the reasons we looked at doing this is because of quite a bit of dissatisfaction with the public in the process that we were using prior.
I will echo what both uh, James and Craig just said, that it was getting confusing for the public, having two different offices, each with a different approach to how to um, manage the situation. to how to um, manage the situation. And I think this will be a much smoother and cleaner process. And I think um, that that is what is needed for our citizens is a something that's consistent. Um, and they're not getting two different amounts of information from two different offices. It's consistent for them. They'll know one place to go. I think it'll be a much better process and um, easier for them.
Well, I'm getting lost here somewhere then. I'll turn that into Kathleen's office. Then I'm done. I don't hear another thing until six months later when it gets through Jill's.
Correct. That is correct. The public will only be dealing with one office um, as they apply. Um, and and part of what we're trying to move away from is there were members of the public who would go into uh, the auditor's office to apply, but then go upstairs to ask for help from Craig's office and then back down to the auditor's office. And and that going from one office to another um, for help and application and that was contributing to the problem. And both Jill and Craig McAllister were enthusiastic in endorsing the idea that at this point it's best to to send the public to a new, fresh office and both of their offices step back and let the public deal solely with with the assessor's office and point the and that if members of the public who have come in in the past come to the treasurer's office or the auditor's office, that both of those offices would point those members of the public to the assessor's office. Um, so that there's just one office that that's helping and and accepting the applications. And and again, both Jill and Craig were enthusiastic in endorsing that new approach for this time.
They'll still they'll still play each other against each other, not not Jill or Craig, but the person will still do the same thing.
Now I No, John, it it's it's not a matter of this abatement will be granted. The basic process is they have to show their income and sign and and pro and actually it's a promise that what they've presented is their actual income, right? So they present verification of it to the assessor's office and that abatement is granted. And and so it's it's sent to the treasurer's office and it's granted. That person receives that relief um, if they've provided the documentation on the front end to the assessor's office. The assessor's office is the clearinghouse for that upfront.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. She's going to say yea or nay, but then it's going to go down to the next guy and he's going to say yeah. But then 25% of them are going to get called back to get reviewed.
No, no, only five, 5% are going to get reviewed. So with our typical applicant.
That'd be 10 people if there's four on if there's two.
About 10 people who are going to get reviewed annually.
Uh, really breaking up the connection we have with you is is really low. But John, John's trying to say here that on the back end, the audit, there would be 5% of those and they're random, right? Just to make sure the process is working, people are providing the information. And so, no, we're not looking at everyone that comes through. There's a it's an audit to make sure the process is working. And Jill does that in all other areas of the county, right? That we're following proper procedure. And that's her job here to make sure that the applications are coming in and the information's being provided and that uh, people are being truthful on those. So there's a small percentage of them. And um, and so not every person that applies for this will be subject to that audit. It's just it's a it's a it's a sample audit will be done to make sure that the applicants, I assume that most of those applicants and audits will just there won't be any problems with them. If there is, then that be brought up and be brought back to the audit committee. I hope it makes sense. It's a simpler process than what I think we're going through. And it's one that uh, obviously it's administrative and and uh, those who are involved in it have been able to work out a really good solution. I think it will it will work in the end. And Gina, Gina and and involved looking at the process, talking with the offices and seeing how to best manage this, so.
All right, any other discussion on this? Has 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 taken brain power tonight. But we appreciate uh, everything that you're doing.
He still looks kind of confused.
Wonder if he's frozen there.
Oh, maybe he's frozen. Yeah.
Oh, no, there he goes. There he goes.
Dave, you're getting freezing. You had us going there.
No, I'm in deep thought. And I still think it's a lot more simple and we're making it.
Yeah. And and Dave, I I would invite any of the council that we could sit down and go through the process before next council meeting. And I I think it is a much simpler process than it even sounds like to y'all than I. Uh, it's a much cleaner process and it will be easier for the public. That's the goal here is to not burden the public, to actually make it easier for the public to make application and get these granted and getting information to them. And to begin with, uh, we'll start mailing out notice to those who've applied before, telling them of the deadlines. Uh, and it it's a customer friendly change in in the process that's going on in the county. It's not, it's less complicated than it was before.
There's a this this question I asked. Is state statute saying who is responsible for this?
State statute says that the council is responsible. Um, and it's code section 59 dash 2 dash 12 11. The county legislative body may adopt rules or ordinances to effectuate the property tax relief under this part of Circuit Breaker and designate one or more persons to perform the functions given the county under the part. So that's why we're coming to the county for that designation. And and in 1997, it was all designated to the auditor's office. And that's why there would need to be a resolution changing that designation uh, to allow the assessor's office to to do the Circuit Breaker portion.
Okay, Jill, how do you feel about this change? And you say John said that you were happy that this was changed, but uh, apparently it was in your in your court. Now it's going to be taken. Uh, how do you feel?
Well, I would be happy to talk to any of you council members in my office about the change. So if you want to, let's make an appointment and come in and we'll discuss it.
Does that mean you're in favor of?
I was. And I think I still am. I think I need to, we need to go through this policy and make sure it's where we need it to be. And I just think I would like to tell you my concerns. I I had concerns and I think we came to a good resolution, but I was in a meeting where there was some discussion about tax dollars being given away that we're really not giving that many away. So I have a different opinion about that. So if you want to discuss it, I'm available anytime. Just let me know.
Thank you, Jill. Are there any other questions or comments? Uh, any direction that we would like to give the committee as they uh, wrap this up and bring it to us for kind of a final uh, look, see and approval? All right, well, we'll move on. We have uh, 13, number 13 other business. Smithfield Health Days Parade scheduled for May 9th is canceled. Richmond Black and White scheduled for May 16th is canceled. That'll save us some money on Tootsie Rolls. Council member reports now. Uh, I'll just start with wh- where you are in in my uh, bar at the top of the page. Gina, you you're first here. Anything to report?
Uh, yes, I have more of a point of personal privilege. Um, and with the notification today that the rest of the school year is canceled. And forgive me if I get emotional because I I have a daughter who's a senior. And this has been very hard for them. And they had hoped that they could go back and fulfill the rest of their dreams uh, for their senior year. And so I know that they are really grieving and I just want to give a shout out to them. Um, but I feel your pain and I agree with you. I'm sad for you. Uh, and just would encourage um, anybody out there who's watching and of course, members of the council who I know are so kind to be patient with these kids. This is so hard for them. None of us have ever been through anything like this before, and I can't even imagine what they're feeling. All I can do is just cry with my daughter as she cries. Um, but this is hard for them and and um, this is a special group of kids and I my heart just goes out to them and and also out to some of the other kids I know that are sad, like those that are moving say, from fifth grade to sixth grade and and some some of those experiences that they're losing as they move schools. So as this interesting dilemma that we're in goes on, I just hope that we can be patient and understanding uh, toward those kids who feel very much lost in this mix of a grown up world where they don't have a voice and they've they're really grieving and um, just need to keep an eye on them because um, the shock of what has happened economically and and to the social structure in our communities is really hard for them. So I just wanted to take a moment and uh, recognize them and and put that thought out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, you're next on my list here. Uh, you must be on mute. I can't hear you.
There. How's that? Um, I had the opportunity last week and the week before to deliver Mills on Wells. And I know some of the other county council members have done that. I know Craig has been involved in it. And it really is a great opportunity to really get out there and help others. The Senior Citizens uh, Senior Citizen Center ha- does an amazing job with getting those mills together. And of course, with this uh, pandemic that's going on, they've had to change their process a little bit. And it's it's really kind of hard just to ring the doorbell and drop a mill off and leave. But those people are so appreciative of what they get. And so I want to give a shout out to the Senior Citizen Center and for all that they do. I think they I don't think that they receive enough recognition for what is done in this valley and how they help the people in this valley.
Thank you, Barbara. I think all of us would definitely concur with what you've said. Brother Erickson, we've got you next.
I don't have much to report. This uh, this pandemic uh, it uh, isn't affecting me the as much as it is other people. You know, I'm still quarantined on the farm. And the the farm still sees me. Uh, but I do feel for what Gina mentioned earlier. I really feel for a lot of those kids because I taught a lot of those kids and the and usually the culminating factor of them uh, kind of hatching out into the the next portion of their life uh, comes at graduation. And uh, it it does make for them. But you know, I'm seeing some fascinating things happen with a lot of people uh, during this. Uh, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity for growth and people to uh, uh, come together on a lot of other things. And uh, you know, I'm seeing families go for walks down the railroad track that I've never seen families ever walk together. Uh, now they're having to and they're loving it. Uh, I think there's, I think we need to grasp every little opportunity we can that we learn from this. I think it's a fascinating process. Countywide, I'm, you know, you talk to a lot of the county employees, you get these texts and little emails and stuff like that. Uh, it's tough. But the county employees are adapting and that we're making it the best that we can. And we're learning so much from it. And it's it's great that uh, we can still put a smile on our face no matter how cold it gets outside or or uh, how vulnerable we are to what's happening. When this is all said and done, I think that this, we will rebound faster than anyone that's and any anything that'll ever have happened before. Because uh, we'd all be ain't very anxious to get back to being social. Uh, it's good to see you guys, but dang it, it's a lot better to shake your hands. That's all I got to say. And and at this, I will shut up or or go still.
John?
Yeah, I miss seeing you brats. But I think there's some good things going to happen because of this. Uh, it's been good for me. I didn't change my life other than I don't go to meetings because I just I got a long commute. I got to walk across a little bitty road down to work. But uh, if you want to tell those seniors something, uh, of Carl, if Carl thinks back when Carl and I graduated, we didn't have much to look forward to either because the draft was on, you went to Vietnam. You didn't have any choice. You either went to school or went to Vietnam. I agree, it's an important thing, but I think I have a girl missed out on a lot of sports, a granddaughter. But I almost think she's gained more from being with her family and doing things together than she did never seen whilst she was doing the other. That that's the only benefit I see to it. But I think you're doing a wonderful job, Craig. It's a it's a mess. But I think you're handling it very well.
Well, I I just Lloyd Berenson at the Health Department and his staff have been excellent in dealing with all this. Their tr- their uh, tracing and and their uh, tracking of all the cases is is really helped us keep the numbers down, I think. So we are uh, you know, we're making some movement towards opening things back up now and hopefully you know, we can do the right thing. You can't please everybody. I've decided that for sure. And who knows when this is all over, uh, we'll come back and evaluate. Some people feel like we did too much. Some people feel like we didn't do enough, but we'll uh, we'll do our best throughout the whole thing. Thank you, John and Craig, very much. Paul? You uh, you're you're kind of setting an example. I've seen a lot more facial hair since this shutdown uh, than than I ever have before. So you're you're leading the charge.
What artwork behind you?
That is a picture of Ossebo Pond out in Savannah, Georgia. So on the Atlantic Ocean and the the artist kind of just takes the picture and compresses it. And so it looks uh, it looks a lot hipper than I really am.
I just I just worried about your taste of art.
Oh, well, I I'm glad Craig went before me because I just wanted to take a minute and and say I so appreciate in our form of government rights subsidiarity. You don't want things happen at the national level. It could happen at the state level. You don't want things happen at the state level. It could happen at the county level and so on. And I think Craig and Lloyd have done a fantastic job of managing things and trying to get things opened up at at our uh, community level. Um, I was happy to see that uh, announcement to open up a few things and I'm looking forward to to seeing more of that. And Craig, I know you can't please everybody, but uh, I I support what y'all are doing and continue to go. So I feel happy. And then just for everybody, no one's safe when the legislature's in session. Um, man, I thought we were done for a little bit. So anything you can do to keep an eye on those guys would be fantastic.
All right, thank you, Paul. I'll just kind of wrap things up then, I guess. Uh, I'll just echo everything that's been said. And I I appreciate so much working with all of you. And I particularly want to tell Jane, thank you. She's keeping things pulled together here. Even though we're all distanced apart, she's keeping everything pulled together. Uh, is there anything else that uh, needs to be discussed?
Yeah, Carl, take tomorrow morning off. Don't get up at four.
I think I will.
I have a funny request. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Carl. I didn't mean to interrupt.
I have a funny request. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Carl. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Nice from that aspect. Yes, go ahead, Gina.
Today in another meeting, we were talking about how we look like the Brady Bunch. So I just wondered if we could do a couple side looks and up looks and just, uh, have a little fun to, for a second. You know, just kind of the looking down or whatever, looking over.
Now, you have to explain to me what that is.
The Brady Bunch. Remember the movie, the show, The Brady Bunch, where they were all in the squares and then they all looked at each other while the music was playing where it came on?
I, I was probably in Vietnam when that happened.
Oh, you probably were. Well, you missed a great show. You got to watch it on me TV if it's ever on.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
You have to go down and click a little spot there at the bottom of the screen and go up and click the squares where the squares are all together. And then it'll bring us all together on the same page. Click participants number seven, seven. Is that what you do?
I think when Gina, you aren't even old enough to understand Brady Bunch, are you?
Um, it was a little before my time, but I watched on reruns when I was a kid.
Up in the upper right hand corner, there's nine squares. You just click on that.
Oh, I don't have that.
Neither.
I got it. Hey, what does it we do?
Just look left and right and down like you're on the Brady Bunch, you know?
All I can say is this.
Thank you for indulging me in that.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. I guess we'll see you in two weeks again.
Sounds good. Quarantine isn't lifted, I'll be even longer on my chinny, chin, chin.
All right.
Thanks, Janine.
I just, I shaved this afternoon just for you guys.
There you go. You don't have to. I'll, you, you can keep going.
Thank you all.
Good night.